Thank you for coming to tonight's workshop. I apologize for being late. I had some car issues. And so what we're going to do is jump into the workshop. There is one business agenda we have for tonight. And we're going to work through the workshop and wait for my colleagues to arrive. And then we'll take the vote. So, thank you. With that said, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Just making sure that all board members, yeah, we just give it a few minutes only because, if you could click it, would be great. So the screen is behind us, and so that's not conducive. But if you all have your laptops, and if you don't, I have a copy of a presentation here. And we have extra copies. Ms. Brody, do you need, do you have, you want to look up there? Okay, so Ms. Brody's going to look up there. You're good? Okay, great. The day will set up. Gotcha. Just wanted to make sure that Stan can, you're on the screen, Stan? Gotcha. Thanks. Slide two here. Just making sure that we ground the work around the funding and the budgeting work that is guided by our district model of excellence and the long-term commitment that we have to drive what we're calling cohesive accountability toward improving the outcomes and reminding us not to look at this just from a siloed perspective around finances, right? That we look at this work around the budget development to identify the interconnection between teaching and learning, family and community partnerships, and operational effectiveness. We know that within teaching and learning, this work is going to allow us to make some decisions around the use of the resources that are going to have direct impact on teachers and our students. And then in terms of the community partnerships, we want to create and actually improve the way that our families are engaging and the SGCs to gather feedback on how to improve this process. And lastly, within operational effectiveness, the work is centered around maximizing the use of resources and initiatives because we still are geared toward minimizing the redundancies that we have. Next slide there is reference to the priority, which is operational effectiveness and specific actions that we're calling out in our strategic plan, and that is to establish transparency in one, our budgeting, but also our staffing process by not only documenting but communicating timelines, the ratios, which is informed by a lot of the feedback that we got last year from a variety of constituents. The new budget process supports implementing the DME and coupled with what we're hoping to be a positive experience, not only for leaders but also for their respective community. So, you know, if we think about what would a successful implementation look like, what we are hoping to do are, you know, these things here, these definitions that we have, the terminology to your left there, right? We aspire transparency, and the way we are defining transparency is for schools to understand exactly how resources are allocated to their school. Does not mean that schools are going to agree with the allocations in all instances, but that there's clear understanding as to how. And the way we want to achieve this is by clearly defining and making publicly available the formula, which we are going to discuss today in detail. We aspire equity, right? That's at the center of the work that we're doing. And that is defined by schools receiving funding consistent with the student needs that they have in their schools. And how, how we're going to achieve that is to allocate certain number of resources based on identified student needs. The new definition here, it's not necessarily one that we identified when we asked feedback from our principals or our respective communities, but it is one that we identified internally as being important to us. And that is around stability. And we define that as schools protected from the most extreme year-to-year resource shifts, even if the student need and the current funding are misaligned. In other words, we know that as part of this model, some schools are going to receive less funding than they're currently might be receiving, and the inverse, right? Some schools might receive more than what they're currently funding. And so we want to make sure that there's stability and that in those shifts, that it's not such an extreme shift in impact on the funding. And the way we hope to achieve that is by having a cap, a cap on year-to-year gain, either the gains or the losses based on the student need. And we're going to kind of have examples throughout the presentation on that. Another one that we hope to achieve is the flexibility. This is one that we heard significantly as a, when we engaged in the feedback process. Schools receiving clearly outlined flexibilities for addressing student needs. We know that we're going to have a formula, but we also kept hearing from schools that they wanted to be innovative in terms of either meeting student needs or identifying specific programming. And the way we're going to get that, and that is by having a clear budget guidebook that speaks to the how and at the school level and also at the district level in terms of the resources for decision-making. And the last two is around the timeliness, making sure that we start the work and finish the work earlier, even though the end, the end date in terms of adopting a budget is later on, you know, in May. We know that we wanted to get as much information to schools as possible, and we're looking at, for example, perhaps tomorrow, you know, as the day where schools get all of the information as to their budget. And so that is a significant change in terms of the timing from previous years. And lastly, the strategic alignment, making sure that they're not only aligned to the needs of the schools but the needs of the district. And if you recall, the way that we engaged and supported schools earlier in, at the end of last school year and through the summer was to have very clear alignment between the school improvement plan and the district improvement plan. And the way that we hope to achieve that is to have a new need-based formula budget guidebook to encourage our schools to make those decisions with the support of our executive directors and other central office staff. Yes?
Sorry, I didn't know how you wanted your questions. Just going back to stability, and I obviously appreciate what we're doing for this year so that schools don't have an extreme change, which I think is really important. Do you plan to do that just ongoing in terms of how you do business? So let's say if it's, you know, three years out, five years out, but always to have that cap of the 5% swing one way or the other? Or is this more of a kind of transition as we're kind of rolling this process out?
So I don't think we'll be done in one year. In terms of, you know, leveling it, I think it has to be a slow gradual process. I know that that's the way that we see it already. Have we thought about, you know, is it three, is it four, is it five years? Not yet. But it is part of what we hope to be able to determine in the next, in the near future.
I think, Kim, we need to get through the next year of the DME school reconfiguration and let that settle in maybe for a year and then reassess at that point.
And, and we have to think about the shifts in enrollment, right? We know that we entered the work of the DME with certain, with specific projections, right? And made several assumptions around enrollment. And so we have to also keep tabs on those very closely.
I have a question.
Yes.
In regards to stability, so there is a lot of job postings that go out because I don't know if I'm supposed to be on that in that distribution list, but there are so many jobs that go out, and it's temporary, temporary, temporary. So how are we, how are we stabilizing our school with staff and all of these jobs are temporary? I'm, I'm very concerned about that because there are positions that you would think a school absolutely needs, but tons go out temporary.
Yeah, so part of that is as per the bargaining agreement at this time of year. And so we have to hire staff as temporary and then, you know, at the beginning of the year, wait out for any of the annual seniority rulings to level out before we can award the person a full, a full-time, a full staff status.
Has this been the practice before? Or I just don't remember so many temporary jobs being offered. So when does the temporary status starts? After a certain period of time, like what time of year would that start, will we start seeing temporary job offers instead of permanent job offers?
I can get you the specific timeline. I know that we have to wait until we start the school year before we can decide that that person is going to be offered the job in its entirety.
And this is outside of teachers? Because I'm not even talking about teachers, I'm talking about paraprofessional and you name it. And then it's, and I'm thinking, who's gonna, who's gonna want a temporary job and can look for a permanent job? So it wasn't any certain type of position, it was multiple positions.
So certainly teachers, certainly paras.
Behavior text and, I mean, you name it.
We can look at all of our bargaining units and identify the date in which that gets triggered, if you will, and then the date on the other side of when, how long we have to wait before pivoting to, for the position to be awarded to that person. But it is as part of the bargaining unit. With regard to the new budget process, we wanted to also identify some of the intentional alignment to the DME non-negotiables. And so non-negotiables kind of take us back to the initial ones that emerged when we did the engagement in the community. And so, you know, intense literacy and numeracy instruction and how that's playing out in the budget, it's around the additional teachers for the high number of English learners in some of our schools. Middle school programming, as you know, additional funding is going to go in for enrichment in middle and high school. College and career, college prep and career development, we are investing in having school counselors both at the middle school and of course in our high schools. Every school towards becoming a community school. We, one of the ways in which we're going to address this is to make sure that every single school has a school-family resource provider. That is not the case currently at all of our schools, but it is identified as part of the design of a, of a school budget. And lastly, to operate schools at a financially healthy and strategic capacity. And that gets to equity and stability when we made the shifts to make sure that we had a certain number of grades, classes in each grade, so that we didn't have to deal with the uneven number and were able to provide not only the students with the resources but teachers the opportunity to learn from and one another.
All right, so the next slide is just a reminder of our budget timeline. So we're in our, we're in the second phase there, the second period down, where the schools have received their initial funding. And all the finance, OTM, school leaders, EDs are collaborating on just what some of those flexibilities might be, what additional needs they might have. And they're going through that process until next Friday, and then we'll receive their initial submission from the various schools. And just a reminder, just to take us back a little bit, this, these were some extracts from some of the administrative institutes that we, we had some budget discussions with. We started this back in September. This is just some chicken scratch from them, but you know, we really had a deliberate process around ensuring that the, the design team of the model itself was very cross-functional. So we had a couple of principals, we had representatives from academics, OTM, finance, sped, just to make sure we had, we had voices heard across the board. All right, so the other thing we, you know, we, I think we shared this with you once before, but the next couple of slides, again, were, were kind of reminders for us. I like, I like keeping them in because this, it helps us just kind of gut check for us on what the principals were telling us over the last few years and few months. So this one was just around what their greatest level of need that they reported out to us when we surveyed them. So I won't read it to you, but you know, most of these we try to account for very deliberately in the new model, and we'll, we'll get through that in a couple of seconds here.
It's also in alignment with what the data are telling us?
Yes.
Right, not only in terms of the, of the achievement, but you know, around chronic absenteeism?
Yep.
Can I ask a question on the?
Absolutely.
The, I didn't, I, I'm just assuming, so in the timeline.
Yeah.
I didn't, I don't see anything mentioned as far as a SGC, but I'm assuming they're in this process.
Yeah, so they're kind of right in the middle of the, the second and third bucket. So we've already, we've already asked the principals to reach out. If you're starting to feel comfortable, start to share with them what the model looks like and what their funding allocations have looked like as well. And then, you know, just depending on where the school is in terms of the maturity and how quickly they're working through it, we've asked no earlier than February 15th, but no later than the, you know, sort of the March 15th timeline in terms of submitting their approvals back into us.
I want to just ask a clarifying question to Ms. Brody. Are you referencing the model or the model and the allocation to the, to the, to the school to be informed, to let the SGC know?
Yes, we do.
I would think as far as if it's saying that what, when it's, when it's saying what's due back from the, from the school. So does schools submit final budget? That's, I'm assuming after the SGC is in agreement. But I don't see SGC mentioned as part, anywhere as part of, it's saying schools. So maybe schools, mean staff, parents, and, and I'm, I'm just assuming because I don't see them mentioned anywhere. So as far as, because this means the budget was approved at the school and sent back to your office, correct?
That's correct.
And that's why I'm questioning the SGC role in this.
It would include the SGC, SGC sign-off as well. Yep.
Okay.
And so we can add that more specifically, David, there as well?
So next slide was just around the flexibility of positions that the principals had also given us some feedback on, that we wanted to share and actually talk pretty extensively with the design team to ensure that these positions, you know, especially the ones highlighted in the light blue, if it's a little tough to read, were accounted for and that we gave them some flexibility. So you'll see in our starter budget where we accounted for some of these and then also provided some flexibility dollars for them to make some decisions on those. And then lastly, just from a feedback perspective, this, and this is more recently, this is part of the October session that we had with the principals. We wanted to hear from them a little bit more deliberately around the budget process, not necessarily just the resources in their schools. So the top thing they mentioned to us was clear allocation rules and formulas, which we're thinking we have a pretty good read on. We've been way out in front of this, we've had six or seven sessions now. The ability to participate in the budget discussions. So if you remember the timeline, after the initial budget submission, we're going to have a cross collaborative discussion with them, with all the functional teams, so we can not only understand what decisions they were making for their schools, but then also understand additional support that they're going to get. And then clearly communicated timelines in the general process. So we started rolling this out in September. I think we started working on it in August. So I think the timelines have been really clear. And I think right now, if I'm right, we're somewhere around 75 to 90 days ahead of where we were last year. So we're moving through pretty well.
This slide, I wanted to be able to capture the strategic alignment to the school needs in, in reference to our priorities. And so to the left there, you see the priorities in our DME and what we're calling key, you know, the key to success. We identified that we needed to have conditions to support added rigor, including professional learning opportunities and for staff collaboration. And so what that would look like, the funding priority, is making sure that we have enough teacher-staff to allow for the common planning time. Also, under teaching and learning, making sure that we integrate the models for English learners. How that translates is that we are going to have additional staffing for schools that have high numbers of English learners. And then of course, the students that are engaged and eager to attend the schools, right? We want to make sure that we have higher engagement. So we do have additional funding in the model for enrichment in both middle and high school. I know we have some in high school now, but what we really want to do is expand the enrichment opportunities at the high school level. With regard to family and community partnerships, want to make sure that families receive proactive outreach from the schools. And again, as I referenced before, having a school-family resource provider at every school. Culture and climate, the way in which that's going to show up in our funding as a priority. We want to, we want to support the social and emotional needs of our students, especially the ones that are entering transition grades. Do all of our students in all of our grades need social and emotional supports? Absolutely. We're saying that we are going to try to target some of the transition grades, specifically as you see there to your right, additional funding for sixth through eighth grade. And how that might show up is to have additional behavior texts to support our standalone middle schools. And lastly, with regard to the chronic absenteeism challenges that we have, having attendance support for all schools, depending on the rate of the chronic absenteeism. We know that funding, of course, is not sufficient in isolation, and so we want to make sure that the district is supporting the schools with their priorities. And in a few slides from now, you'll see how it all can evolve in terms of the allocations. One more reminder that I want to make around the stability piece is that, you know, as we roll out this new formula, we have to consider that there, you know, the opposing forces. Yes, the equity that we want to achieve in, across our schools, but also our commitment to stability. We don't want to completely disrupt a school by, by moving too fast, if you will, in terms of either the loss that they're going to have or the gain that they might have in their budget. And also to keep in mind that we're still in year two. We're in the middle of year two of our three-year timeline as it relates to our structural changes, right? Enclosures, weak configurations, co-locations. And so keeping that as well so that we're helped, we're able to manage all of the changes.
So I thought I'd just start to take you through the model, and if you conceptualize the model really in two pieces, the first one is slide 14 here, which is just the foundation stuff. Foundation or starter budget? I think we shared an initial draft with you a few months ago, but this is where we're, we're standing today. So I'll read, I'll read through a few and let you read them as you go through. But every school, obviously, would have a principal. On the AP side, it's one per 500 students with a minimum of one per school and a max of two. Executive assistants would be one per school, teachers, up to class size mandates. Counselors, we differentiated between middle and high school, one per 500 for middle, one per 350 for high school. Social workers, one per 250. And then we get down to the bottom where we have, you know, an allocation for supplies, stipends, and also some discretionary dollars. So this is, this is the way we started with all the schools. And I'll show you in a minute what that, what this piece of it cost us. Then there's the second section, which is slide 15, which gets into the student needs within the school. So these are the first four categories that we started with this year. So one was around supplemental teachers for EL. So for all schools over 15% threshold of EL, they get one additional teacher for every 35 EL students, ELL students. On the attendance support side, it's, all schools with over 25% chronic absenteeism get one specialist for every 125 chronically absent students. And then there's some supplements. So there's some supplements for middle school, roughly $370 per student, and then there's a magnet supplement as well of $500 per, per student. All right? So the starter budget, right now we're estimating is around $150 million to achieve the starter budget and have all the schools start at a sort of a level playing field, depending on what the differentiation is in size. Then the student and need-based priority funding is another seven. For additional middle school funding, EL, chronic absenteeism, and the magnet school supplements. So I think we started, I think maybe in November, we were talking around maybe 115 total, we were ending up around 157 or so.
So $7 million is what we have as perhaps a cushion, it's not, it's not a good word, but to do extra, right? To provide extra.
Differentiated funding, right?
Supports.
Yeah.
That are not extra because we already have supports. It's just that that's what's available to do as much as we can with the, with the high needs in some of our schools.
All right, so we, the next slide, we started to talk through it, but just as we were going through, these, these were a little bit of guiding principles for us as we started this process. So we wanted to make sure all the schools had a starter budget with just a basic tenet of what we define as great teaching and learning. We wanted to make sure we started with sustainable, sustainable resource models that can support the long-term vision for community schools. And then the super. And then the superintendent started to talk about the caps or gains, but right now, we have a 500 per pupil plus or minus cap or gain built into the model. So, no one, and you'll see a couple graphs later on how that affects some of the schools, so that no school in year one can achieve more than that or lose more than that in terms of their funding. And then also, as a reminder, outside of this model, so these are, these are essentially resources that the administrators have primary decisions over, they're also going to receive support from ELEADs, their special education support, all the facilities and grounds, the SPOs, these are just a couple examples here. So, I think we, year two, we'll get into starting to integrate more into the model to make it abundantly clear to the principals right up front, their entire suite of supports that they'll receive.
So, those are central office...
They're all centralized.
Centralized supports.
Yep, they're all budgeted centrally.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Please, sorry.
Sure.
When, how did, what was the planning around when it, the starter budget? Like, what will school get? Like, in particular, the counselors and associate workers, like, how did we arrive that those are good numbers?
I can start. So, some of it started with some research that ERS shared with us. We also took into consideration that the current level support that the schools were receiving, and then also reached into the, to June Sellers' organization to provide some expertise as well, on whether or not that's a, just an appropriate level to start with.
There, there are also national, not parameters, but best practice recommendations in terms of, of numbers. So, we are within, you know, the recommendation, not to say that it is where we would want it to be, right? One social worker per 250 students, because we know that when we think about schools, right, the school context matters as well. One school with one social worker for 250 students might look, the need might be very different at another school with the same numbers, but they were informed by national
So, this was mainly based on national trends more so than what our district needs are?
Both. They were both taken into consideration.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, and I know you presented some of this information before at the Finance and Audit Committee, so I have to go back to the 157 million. Is, is that because you're pulling out some of the, I'm just thinking about the meeting we just had yesterday where we're talking about the reality in terms of tuition and those type of things? So, is it that you're taking those pieces out and saying, okay, we know where the 150 is coming from, because based on these numbers, like you guys just went through, in terms of national best practices, what you believe the local need is, expertise, et cetera? And then when you do that and you take out the reality of tuition, et cetera, that's how we're left with the $7 million?
No, the, you know, the $7 million was bottoms-up based on the need.
Okay.
So, we looked at the EL levels, the chronic absentee levels, and then the two supplements, we felt like were appropriate supplements, especially on the magnet side and the, the middle school side, just given the transition of middle school to high school.
Okay.
And then also ensuring that the magnets had additional money outside of just resources to keep themselves competitive.
So, I guess what I'm saying is if, I guess what I'm asking is maybe a slightly different question, is, let's say we were in a different world where tuition wasn't where it is.
Mm-hmm.
Would that have given us more dollars for that needs piece of the $7 million? I guess that's where I was going. Like, basically, is the fact that the tuition is increasing taking away from our ability to, to fund those type of needs across the schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Or maybe, but think about if we didn't pay tuition, we would have those students, so that would be a whole diff, we, I don't think...
Different equation.
We can say that, because if we had the students, that money would be spent for those students and all those supports that those students would need.
But I, I think we can support those students at a, a different rate than what we're paying for some of the facilities that we pay tuition to. So, we'd be able to enhance some of that additional supplement.
So, I think in terms of the out, some of the out placements, that's definitely the case. But even the students that are serviced by other operators, for example, or other districts that we are not part of the decision-making process when designing their IEP and their programming, so there, there could be potentially, I don't want to use the word savings, but the, the number might be different, even though we would still have to pay for the student in our district.
And hire the adequate staff and supports for those students. I, I see how we would definitely save on transportation, but as far as addressing the need of the student, I don't see that being tremendously, if we're, if we're going to support them the way that we should support them. I can see the transportation piece right off the bat of savings, but that, giving them what they need, to me, that's just something different and costly, very costly, if we're going to do it correctly.
No, it certainly is.
So, I was just saying, I, I completely agree with you. I think one of the things we were talking about in the meeting yesterday would be, how could we, in a very responsible way, accelerate more of that move to, oh, could we do things in district if we handle it? And it would take a good amount of investment, like we were talking about, hey, wouldn't it be great to have like $10 million so that we could put the supports in place in district that are needed for our students, so they wouldn't have to have, so, no, that I completely agree with you. And I, what I was trying to get a handle of was, if we're able to move in that direction and figure this out, would that in the end give us more dollars to be able to support our students in other ways? So, that's why I was asking the question, but I do agree with you. I think, and I think that's the work that Dr. Sellers and her team is, is trying to work on, and, and obviously, we have to figure out a way that we can do it and, like I said, do it responsibly, so.
As a long-term, more of a long-term planning, yes.
Before you finish, I would like to stop right now and sort of play around with the agenda and jump to item 2.1 and just take that vote really quickly. Yeah, still, still gonna take it, since you rushed. I'm not sure. I'm waiting there. Is there a presentation with this?
Yes.
Do you have to use this or?
No.
No? Okay.
Just getting warmed up, you know?
Nah, you don't got to move.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to repeat the last five.
Dave, the beauty of it is, then you can take your time. But I just wanted to get this business agenda out of the way, because it's just one and short. And we officially have a quorum now. Okay. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, so we're gonna have a brief presentation, and then we'll, you have the motion that is necessary, but just to give background around the State Department of Administrative Services Office of School Construction Grant requires that school building committee and boards of education certify that they have approved the final construction documents for school construction projects prior to OS CG review of the plans, and once the plans have been reviewed and approved, then the projects are allowed to go out to bid. And so, just in terms of procedural, at this time, the Hartford School Building Committee, working through Arcadis, ONG, CNR, Program Management, has reviewed and approved the construction packages for the activities that are listed here below, and will advance the construction project being performed, both at Weaver High and Phase Five for FFNE Furniture, Fixtures, Equipment and Technology. So, we'll get into the details.
So, good evening, board members, superintendent. As the superintendent mentioned, we are presenting to you Phase Five. This is the last phase of the Weaver project, and this phase is actually about furniture, fixtures, equipment, and technology. As the superintendent mentioned, the OS CG, the Office of School Construction and Grands, requires that the Harvard Board of Education, in this case, us, you, approve this one particular construction documents in order for then the architect to go into and request from the state final approval. So, with that, I have Sal Salafia from Arcadis ONG and Ken Mohart from SLAM, and thank you. I'm just gonna turn the conversation to...
One, one second, before you, before you start that. All right, so what I wanted to do is just tee it up, we teed this thing up, and so what I need to do now is actually do a row and call official meetings, just so we can do this part.
Yes.
So, can you please call the row? Ms. Dorfin, thank you.
President.
Here.
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 Thank you so much. Please continue.
Good evening. My name is Kent Mohart, I'm with the SLAM Collaborative Architects. We've been working on the Weaver project for several years now. Thank you for adjusting the agenda for us, that was very helpful. Just as a brief overview, we've been working with the district over the past six months to develop the furniture fixtures and equipment packages and technology equipment packages. We've also been working with MHIS directly, and Sharice in that office has been working with all the individual instructors and so forth to identify all the equipment that needs to be purchased. We've summarized all that into construction documents. Most of the equipment and furniture will be purchased off the state bid list, but there are some unique pieces that we need to go out to public bid for. So, we, we do have, we have four individual packages that are going to the state tomorrow. One for furniture fixtures and equipment, that is to be bought off of state bid list, and then another one that is to be bid publicly, and then similarly for technology equipment, we have one to be bought off state bid list and one to be bid. There's not a lot to look at as far as drawings are concerned, it's mostly numbers and quantities. We do have drawings that show symbols on the, on each room for the building, but that's about all it shows, and, and furniture layouts, of course. But it has been vetted through all the, the district supervisors at the different departmental levels, and, you know, we're confident that it's addressing all the needs.
Are there any questions? I just have one. And it's, in particular, the radio station, we're gonna make sure that engineering and things conducive for, I saw, the independent programming, because the way it's structured now...
As a matter of fact, Craig, we, we have already had contact with John Ramsey, who is the engineer that has been working with QDQ for eons, and we are going to actually bring him onto the payroll to assist in the movement and the setup and testing of the radio station when it moves. He actually was there this week to locate the new antenna, where that had to be positioned so that it would be effective.
Okay. I have one request. Could we somehow circle John into this loop also?
Circle?
Our John.
John Ferguson.
John Ferguson to this process.
Absolutely.
Also, I mean, just because we need to make sure that we have, I want to make sure that we have centralized training for the radio station. So, once we start and we're putting everything together, once he has a working knowledge of it, then he can help us, help the district.
So, the answer to those, absolutely.
Thank you, that's all.
Yeah.
No, no, not on your payroll, that's just...
No, no.
Consulting.
Don't worry, so, on your payroll.
He's looking like what?
Can I just ask a quick question in regards to, we were told before that we're starting school on the first day of school, but the fieldhouse would be a later date. What is that later date again?
Right now, we're, we're targeting January 1st.
So, that's a little later than what we were told. I thought it was, it wasn't into 2020.
It was, it was the end, it was the end of December.
Thought it was, yeah, thought it was in 2019. So, now, we're saying January 2020.
We're talking a matter of days. If we want to say December 30th, we can say that.
Okay.
Because no, no one will be working on the 31st.
So, they make that clarification of the information that you received and the community received was January 30th, right? So, what Mr. Salafia is saying is the 1st of January, I mean, like, basically it's...
No, it was December initially.
Right, December 30th.
Yes.
Yeah.
Half-year, it was the marker for us.
But we're still looking at the half-year mark.
Okay, I'm just thinking about how the, the whole, the scheduling around, you don't have gym, you need credits, I hope it's not a senior that needed some, you know, that's waited to the last minute, that's, you know, I'm just thinking about academically, not the gym to play in the gym, but the gym as in regards to credits.
We addressed that when, when the first, when the fieldhouse first came online and advised principals, and we spoke with Nicole Porter as well, that there would be a need to do some planning and some scheduling of how they were going to accommodate, you know, those needs. Obviously, for the first few months, maybe physical education doesn't take place in the fieldhouse, but again, we think we're talking about August, September, October, you've got at least three of those months where you should expect that the weather outside would permit. The other option, obviously, are to do some indoor programs that might revolve around films, whatever, but that, it's been discussed.
Okay, but the, the dressing rooms or the lockers, that's not the delayed part, or is it all connected?
Yes, the, the locker rooms and the fieldhouse are all part of that package.
Okay, 'cause I was like, you have me running outside and I can't go in and change and shower, so I don't know. Maybe, I'm just thinking of when I was a student and how my mind worked then, as far as that, but as long as it's being discussed and considered.
It is something that the design team, the internal design team, is thinking through in terms of, you know, are there students that we can connect with so that they can perhaps have a summer, you know, PE, PE class and get it out of the way, so that next year, you know, that's something that they're not being held back. You know, sometimes we, we have it, we could have a student that needs two gym credits, and so, and that person is a senior, for whatever reason, Chairman Stallings, right? We, we've had those, and so, making sure that we leverage as many opportunities as possible. So, the design team is thinking through what those options could be for our students. Because we would have to think about the seniors, right? That is the first priority, the other, the other grades, we have time for.
So, just a quick question, just so we have clear that the part where it comes, when we're talking about equipment and fixtures, there, this is not including the fieldhouse, correct? This is just for every other part of the school?
It does include the fieldhouse.
Oh, it does include as well?
This is the funding.
Okay, so when, when we're doing the build-out, excuse me, the bidding, it's going to be for the entire school, including the fieldhouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, some of that specialty equipment will be purchased a little bit later, so that we don't have to inventory it and store it someplace, specialty stuff that's going to go into the exercise fitness room. But it will all be presented and approved for purchase when we go to meet with the state tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Or comments, concerns? Okay, here and none. Just going to read the motion and for the record. Officially, we're discussing item 2.1, approval of school construction plans and the S C G dash zero four two, submittal Phase Five Furniture Fixtures Equipment and Technology. The motion for the Harvard Board of Education approves the final plans and authorize the architect to submit documents to the construction phase, excuse me, for the construction phase of work for the above preferred school projects to the Office of School Construction and Grants for their review and approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved, they're second?
Second.
It's been moved and second and all in favor of approving this motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes carried, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And just to be thorough, is there a motion to adjourn this special meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved, they're second?
Second.
It's been moved and second and all in favor of adjourned this special meeting, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, the ayes have it, motion carries. We stand in adjournment and we can continue our work. Thank you. Dave, please. Remember where you left them?
I think I was on slide one. Yeah, I'd just wait for you to sign. All right, so we are on slide 18. And then, and the next few slides have very similar illustrations where we're just going to try to portray to you what some of the differentiation of funding looks like, based on what you've heard on the starter budget, as well as some of the student need allocation. So this is just one example. I think the previous slide, we started to talk about the cap and the strategy around the cap process, but we thought we'd just take you through one, this is not a live school, it's just an example of how the cap and the supplement start to work. So if you start in the left-hand corner as an example, a school might have received $7,600 per pupil. As we implement the new formula, based on need and their starter budget, this school would theoretically lose $1,500. So their new funding level would be $6,100 per pupil. However, we had the two, the two supplements and/or caps in play. This was a magnet school as an example, so they would receive 500 per pupil for that magnet supplement. And because they lost more than $500 to $1,500 in that second column, we would cap their loss at 500. So at the end, when we give them their allocation, they would receive $7,100 per pupil. So all of this in between gets you from the 76 to the 71 as just an illustration of how we're trying to cap gains and losses. All right, so I thought I'd take you through a little bit of how this will start to shake out in the schools. So the funding formula itself, I won't spend too much time on this slide because I think we've walked you through this, but we wanted to make sure these characteristics were taken into consideration. Obviously, grade level because their class size is different. So as you think about teachers, we wanted to make sure the teachers matched up with our, our class size mandates, the student needs that we talked about between chronic absenteeism and E L, the school size. So actually, some of the smaller schools gained a little bit more per pupil when we had some of the one per school allocations, if you remember. And then the magnet supplement that we actually just walked through as an example.
Excuse me, the mag, we're saying magnet schools receive a modest supplement of 500 per pupil. Was that different? What is it now?
No, it's 500 right now.
Okay.
Yeah. So the next few slides, we're just, we're going to walk you through, you know, either based on school size, student needs, what some of the differentiation starts to look like. So the first one is just based on the per pupil on average, based on grade size. So I'll just start at the left-hand corner. So this, this is an illustration of the average per pupil funding for elementary schools K eight. So the first bar is their funding from this year, so 6,055. Under the new funding model, this, think about the sort of consortium of schools would receive 7,200. However, some of those have some caps on them. So what the model would tell us now is that group would receive 6,542. So for K, K A E S, the funding from this year from 6,055 would increase to 6,542.
A neighborhood school?
This is, this is all combined. So we're going to break down neighborhood and magnet as well for you. So this is sort of the whole portfolio.
So that means that then they would be short based on what we thought were the parameters, they'd be short of meeting their needs.
The 7205, you mean, is what we identified as in alignment with the needs of the schools? Correct. Correct. So either with the gain or the loss.
That's correct.
That's how we would level.
Yep. So it would take them a few years to reach that point where they're meeting what we think are the needs of the school.
Correct. We'll, we'll speak to how we can level it.
And conversely, someone who's got the loss capped, they'd have additional discretionary funds.
Could you, could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I just.
If, if the school got additional funding, would that be considered discretionary funds? Or the flex, you're talking, the flex, flex dollars?
They, they would based on their per pupil, their enrollment, yes.
Not to do, you know, whatever, right? I mean, we want to make sure that it's in alignment with the needs, but yes, that is added funding.
Question. So magnet schools, which definitely fit into that pre-K 12 and that six through 12, I think probably all six of those schools are magnet schools, would be receiving less either way than they are receiving now.
Correct.
Yeah, and you'll see a slide, and we could actually jump to that in a second, but we have a slide that shows you the magnet comparison to neighborhood for, you know, kind of call it pre-K to 12, as well as the high schools. So we'll show you that. So essentially, if you just, if you think about the two bookends here, on the elementary side, K eight side, they're going to receive some additional funding, primarily because of their need. On the high school side, it's just a little bit less funding. You know, if you look off, off to the right there, 6940 to 6,789.
I have a question, and maybe pardon me if this was already answered, but when we are saying student need, what are we identifying as student need for K through eight and then the student need for high school?
So we based it on the, the two rows below there, just based on E L, percentage of E L, and percentage of chronic absenteeism. So I don't know if I have the slide here for you. Give me one second.
Might be helpful to reference slide 14 as the.
That's what I was trying to find.
Slide 14 is just the.
Is that what the number is?
The starter, well, that's a starter budget.
Yeah, so slide, slide 15 would show you how we started to differentiate based on student need and/or supplement for magnet or the middle schools.
After the base, which is slide 14.
So based on what you stated about the need for K through eight and then high school, it seems like for high school, the E L and the chronic absenteeism is higher. So we're decreasing high school and increasing grade due to, so we're not necessarily doing on the percentage of E L and absenteeism?
It is. Some of the larger high schools are the magnet schools.
Okay.
So they receive some of the magnet funding, which, you know, unfortunately offsets some of the need base funding that we're giving them.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
Yeah, sure. So we're going to keep breaking this down. We'll go to the next one. So this was just to give you some differentiation. So this is just looking at the E L side. So if you see in the bottom, it's zero to 15% of students, E L students, and then greater than 30. And we just used E S, K eight, and high school to give you an example. So similar, similar trend on the, the elementary schools, where they're going to receive some additional funding. And at the high school, it's, you know, slightly down or relatively flat. I'll keep going to just to keep breaking this down. The next one was specifically around chronic absenteeism. Similar thresholds on the bottom, you know, zero to 15% and then greater than 30. And the trend looks somewhat similar on the E S K eight side, where they would receive some additional funding. And then the high school side, they would receive a little bit more funding if they're lower chronic absenteeism and, you know, a little bit less at the greater than 30.
Go back to the previous slide a minute.
Yeah, sure.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two, just so I can follow.
Yes. Yes, 22.
Yeah.
So the school with a higher E L gets less funding?
On the, just, just in general, just. So at the high school level, well, in, in. In some of these cases, it's, it's still, when we're just looking at one component of it, some of the magnet funding that we have to allocate to the school offsets the additional funding that we're providing to them based on the student need. So when you look at a group of schools like this combined, that's why I think when we get to the magnet neighborhood, that might help you a little bit, but we're trying to just, we're trying to give you illustration, walk you through all the different variations, you know? But in this case, it distorts it a little bit because of the required magnet funding for those schools. So they have lower need, but they receive higher funding because of the magnet component. Yes. And that's what you would see on 22 and 23. It's the same, same scenario because we're just breaking down the, the one component for you. But just wanted to give you that transparency of how each piece of it starts to pull together. So we tried to look on 24. You know, just how this would play out based on F R, F R L. Which is higher rates of poverty, so similar trends on the, the lower grades, and almost similar on the, the high school as well. And we thought this was important just because of the correlation between E L and chronic absenteeism.
And we just wanted to highlight it as a correlation, not because it was explicitly factored into the model as, you know, chronic absenteeism was and English learner supports was, were, given that we have so many students that are considered free and reduced lunch recipients.
That's correct.
So there isn't a supplement for income, just showing how there's a relationship?
Yeah, we, well, we just wanted to check ourselves, just to make sure it was following. Yep. And that's similar to on slide 25, where we looked at E L A proficiency. So you can see in both cases here, schools with lower rates of proficiency receive a little more funding. So maybe back to the original magnet question, I'm on slide 26. This will give you an indication of just magnet neighborhood schools. So the, the blue is, little change in color here because we, the blue is the current funding per pupil, and red would be the new funding model with excluding the transition policy. So if you look off to the left, same set of columns, E S K eight, on a magnet school, they would move from 6,130 to 7,232. And neighborhood schools would go from just about 6,000 to 7,183, so fairly similar. Then off to the high school, you know, your magnet schools would receive, are receiving around 6,642, they drop slightly to 6,420. And the neighborhood schools drop a little bit as well, from roughly 7,200 to almost 7,000. But in aggregate, the neighborhood schools, again, based on need there, are receiving a little more funding than the magnet schools. All right, so just, just to ground you again, so we've taken you through some different slices of it, but wanted to kind of bring you back up to the top level. And this was important for us, just to try to get a distribution of the gains and losses on slide 27. So what this would tell you is just based on the funding change, 20 schools would have more than the $500 per pupil gain. And then I'll take it to the bottom, six schools would have lost more than 500 per pupil. And then you could see in the middle there, there's, you know, a few at various levels. So the cost to supplement the schools that were losing was about a million and a half dollars to make sure we provided some stability in the district.
So are we saying that schools, some schools, we believe we're getting too much money? Is that safe to say or no? Because I'm saying, regardless of magnet status or not, certain age groups in one building is, is not fun, right? You have pre-K to 12. You have to use these resources and stretch them all across these grade levels, like from six to 12. So while we did a good job with the K through eight, because that's a struggle too, because you have these middle schoolers in the same building and you're figuring out where you're going to put the resources because you're not, you have a lot of students and a lot of different needs in one building. So the, the areas where we were assuming we needed more support, those schools are getting less funding. So I'm not a big fan of this new funding model. I guess that's safe to say, because it's, you already are stretching those resources and figuring out what you're going to focus on and what you can't focus on, but you need to focus on. And now you even have less to do it with. So it's just concerning.
Wondering, Dave, if there's a way to look at it differently for the distribution in a K 12? When we ran the numbers, it doesn't necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, we.
I can see how Ms. Birdie is seeing it, and I could see it that way as well. But as it relates to, like, if we calibrate that with the need.
Sure.
In the school.
And we're, we're at the point now where we have it by school, so maybe a couple examples might help as well. We didn't have that a few months ago, but I think even before the, you know, the schools submit their budget. submit their budget, we could just use a kind of a scenario and show you some schools, if that would help. So, the distribution on 27, we just taken the same approach and just wanted to show you the same distribution as we split it between neighborhood and magnet. Same calibration, same differentiation off to the side in terms of how we split it. On the magnet side, there would have been nine schools that would have gained, three that would have lost more than 500. On the neighborhood side, it was 11 and 3. And you could see the $1,000,005 that we discussed on 28 on just how that supplement is spread across those.
So, you're basically implementing or actualizing that equity chart? You know how you had the kid, the three kids?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right.
That's exactly right. Yep. If you still have that illustration, it's a great way of thinking about it.
Um, Dave, so I know in the beginning you discussed the funding priority and how this will work out in the magnet and in the neighborhood schools. I'm sure this is thought out, but I just want to... It wouldn't be me if I didn't say it, but when we're talking about hiring additional staff to support the ELL and also understanding funding for support attendance, I hope that we're getting to the root of some of the causes. Obviously, ELL, that's just a language barrier there. However, when we're talking about chronic absenteeism, we're digging deeper than just hiring someone to come in and say you're in charge of the attendance.
Right.
But you're really digging into why that youth is not attending school and/or if they're attending school, why they're not going to class, and really connecting in that way, because while this is very intentful, we want to... Well, while this is very strategic, we want to be intentful in how we're doing it, because giving funding, some schools would be like, "Okay, great, thanks." But not really targeting the population that, why we're saying they're at the greatest need. So, again, very thought out, but I want to make sure that we're intentful when we're going through the process of doing this funding priority.
Just to respond to that, one of the things that we are in the process of doing is looking at the current positions that we have that, for example, do work around supporting our families and connecting our families to the school. So, we have family resource, associates of resource aides, family, school, support providers, and so looking at all of those responsibilities, job descriptions, and streamlining it for the purpose specifically of the work around chronic absenteeism as well. And so, that could get, right, at what you're lifting as one way to get at it, not just to have someone, you know, make a phone call and inform a family that it's important to be in schools, but to identify not only the root cause for the child, but perhaps the root cause for the family as well.
If I may, the... Another issue, I think, that we should focus on that, I don't think it's going to take a lot of... It will take time, but not necessarily a lot of resources, is just subcultures that kids prescribe to. I have two adolescent high school students, and one's obsessed with basketball, the other one's obsessed with Fortnite. And so, it's a struggle between Fortnite and basketball to get the guys to concentrate and focus.
Welcome to my house.
And so, I'm also, you know, discovering that organization and just being able to approach your academic career with perspective. I am not coming across a lot of students who really have that perspective, and I'm not, for whatever reason, I'm not necessarily contributing that to home life as much as just simply, how are we addressing those intangibles? Many of us, when we were young, were either motivated or we were still guided and we had structured environments, and we don't have that, or we have that, and it's disconjointed. So, you have to take that into account. And then, when we have these co-ops, teams, for example, if you have a kid, a team at Buckley, and their kids coming from different places, where they get that academic support and do that, how does that fall through the cracks? So, I think while you're addressing family, which is a good thing, we have to figure out how to leverage partners to do those, to deal with those intangibles, and that after our work. Because again, I'm going to say that I believe the 13 hours those kids, kids are not in school are those critical hours, and my perspective is we need to do a better job as a community to support education and academics, because to my colleague's point, you guys are clever, trying to intentionally figure this out, but it's just those intangibles, and if we don't fix those things, then that's where you'll find the senior that needs two gym classes to graduate and things of that nature, and it's those, you know, kind of a silly problem to have.
Yeah.
But I just find that Dr. Hill talked about students are children going through two major transformations in their lives, one when they're in their formative years at four or five, six years old, and then the other 14, 15, 16. And in that age, they're not rational. I think they know it all, and you can't talk to them. So, how do you penetrate that? And I think teachers, parents, administrators are begging for that kind of help. And so, I think that's the deficit that we have to focus on, and we can't do that alone. So, I just wanted to add that.
So, we're on 29.
Next, we just wanted to list some next steps there in terms of... This is probably where we can add the reference earlier made to SGCs, Dave.
Yep.
And what is not here is... So, we had six engagements with the community, SGCs, PTOs, and then the other five throughout the community, but we've not been back with the full model. And so, that's something that we're thinking about as to, you know, getting out at least one more time, so that we can have an opportunity to engage with the community and answer, you know, any questions.
And I think we just had our wrap-up slide, 30.
Yes. So, these are some of the reflections thus far, knowing that we continue to engage with the cross-departmental design team and then with the leadership team, which includes leaders from all of the departments, special ed, transportation, academics. And so, these are some of the things that we've identified, and of course, the executive directors who interact with the principals on a regular basis, and we get the feedback on a weekly basis so that we can respond from a design perspective. And so, you have there listed some of the strengths, you know, clearly outlining the rules for school allocations several months before they have to submit. The touch points with the executive directors and other central office support staff, just to promote the better understanding. You know, it is, you know, comprehensive, and it has a lot of details, the model, so we want to make sure that we allow ample opportunity for our school leaders to understand it and then be able to communicate that to their communities. And leadership team reviews of outstanding issues to do what we're calling triage and ensure alignment, right? Making sure that Dave's department is in constant communication with, you know, the Office of Talent Management and the other departments. And then still for us, the opportunities and things that we're trying to solve for is the better communication on how the gain and the losses will affect the short-term funding. And I would add there, David, the long-term funding, right? That was, you know, to Ms. Oliver's question. And how to better communicate that to our, just our community in general, in a way in which, you know, doesn't perpetuate this narrative of the us versus them, you know, magnet versus neighborhood school. That's what we want to walk away from. And so, still trying to identify what's the best way to communicate that. And more data on the full budget picture, including the centrally located positions, right, at central office, special education, T-Sol supports, and then the tools and support for making the school scheduling decisions that work with new staffing realities, right? We don't just, like we said earlier, want to give, you know, for the schools that are getting additional funding, we don't just want to say, "Here you go, right? You're getting additional funding." You determine how the staffing allocations are going to, can go. We want to make sure that there's support throughout that process.
Do we know right offhand how many students are enrolled at Capital Prep? Approximately their enrollment?
We can...
Um, I can look something up.
Roughly.
Yeah, give me a second. I'm just...
No, they were...
I can find my mouse.
But I want to make sure because of the January 1st, is another time that we check it?
So, I had the October count, 523.
Yeah. Were you asking for collectively or upper or lower?
Um, collectively, based on this pre-K through 12. So, you said five?
523.
So, we have 520. I just want to make this real, right? 523. That, that, I want to... I would like to know when this funding comes full circle, that is a game changer in funding for their school, just them. I ain't even count, like, I'm assuming HMTCA is a 6 through 12 in some other schools, but that 520, because there is almost like an $800 difference per... Is this per pupil? How is this... Maybe I'm wrong, as far as the funding that they're getting. When we, when you say, when you, the blue and the red is on...
Slide 26.
26, yeah. So, help me understand, so I can walk away with that.
Yeah, that's per pupil. Just get myself back up here.
$800 times 523 students. Just know that is a game changer in funding that you're getting and what you're going to be getting. So, this, that's, this is nothing light. So, I want to, I would like to, for us to revisit, even if it's not, you know, at a meeting, for me personally, the impact, like, what, what are they going to have to give up? Losing that much funding.
So, can I ask a quick question to Ms. Brody's point? Is it that they're losing funding or we're just changing how we're structuring it and they're actually getting funding from the magnet school side? Excuse me, from that, the fact that they are a magnet school?
Like, is there something else that's not counted here?
Yeah, I think that's where the clarity needs to come through. Is it the fact that we're going from 7,000 to 6,000, and that's because of the fact that they're receiving more money because they're a magnet school? And that's the way I interpret it, and maybe I'm incorrect.
Which slide are you on, 26?
26.
26. So, just in general, I know that we were going back and forth between magnet and neighborhood. So, the way that I took it was that we're decreasing with the new funding model to the 6,255 because they're receiving more money because they're magnet schools, and we're not essentially changing how they're going to do their day-to-day school budget.
No. There, the funding comes from the magnet's grant, but they still... It's the 6255 is what Ms. Brody is...
Okay, so they actually, so it is going to be a significant decrease in what she's referring to.
And the slide 26 includes the cap, the added. Is it calibrated, Dave?
It does not include the cap. No, it does not include the cap. So, these, you know, these three or four slides in a row here were just to give you the full differentiation.
No one will lose $800 per pupil because...
You can't, you can't lose more than 500. This was to show you, if we had no transition, just kind of, just based on need, this is what the differentiation would look like.
In the case of Capital Prep, which is the example Ms. Brody was talking about, they get an extra $500 for the capital, $500 for being a magnet school.
That's correct.
So, where would we see, because this is not... Because we know that per school, per student, rather, no one's getting $7,000. So, how could you show us that we could truly see how much?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to show you a few schools to break it down for you. I think that would be helpful. Because right now, we're just aggregating.
So, we can get a few schools now, but ultimately, all schools.
Oh, yeah, well, we'll be able to show you all, but I'm just thinking now, we should be able to give you a couple of examples.
Okay.
I think that might help ground it.
And so, we're saying this because we're saying that this, obviously, and again, we'll just use Capital Prep as a framework for the pre-K through 12. We're stating that they don't need this additional money because they are not in our quote-unquote needs part, correct?
In terms of the...
In terms of how we're defining need.
The percentages that we identified?
Yes.
I'd want to just go to the slide.
They wouldn't fall in there.
Right. Slide 21?
Right, so we're saying that they don't have the highest absenteeism and they don't have the highest ELL, correct? And so, that's why we're changing the funding.
That would be correct.
Correct, okay.
In terms of additional?
Absolutely. In terms of additional funding, they're...
Differentiation funding.
Right, differentiation is due to the fact that they don't have the highest chronic absenteeism and they do not have the highest ELL, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But we, but there may be other things that we're not considering. Like, you come to school every day, and you don't need ELL support, but you can have other things that need to be addressed, but as far as this go, we're not considering that.
Meaning if they, if they had, if they needed special education support?
They might not be identified, but it's things that's going on in the school that the school has figured out.
That's true.
We needed to put extra supports around this, but it's not anywhere noted or identified, I should say. But it may be going on, but we're just using those two indicators.
It could be going on, but the schools do have discretionary dollars, that if they needed some additional support, they could use those discretionary dollars for that support?
That's a slide that I realize is not here, Dave, that we might have to bring back in.
It's just buried in 12, right? It just...
Yeah.
It shows you just the per pupil allocation.
It can speak to Ms. Brody's question as to the flex dollars that schools will get to potentially address a specific need that has been identified...
That's correct.
...by the school.
Put one of those together.
I just wanted to clarify, so we're sticking a pin, and you're going to put together a slide showing what exactly?
It might not be helpful. I just, it's a slide that we had been using, you know, the one that has the, like, the triangle, the inverted triangle, which speaks to what's the, the flex, the amount of dollars and the fact that schools will have...
Yeah.
...a discretion as to what to use with their, the additional, the flex dollars that every school has.
Right, right, versus the non...
Right.
That it's not just about the English learners.
That's correct.
Special, uh...
There's three different areas in which they have some flexibility.
There are the other flexibilities.
Yep.
In addition to the starter budget allocations.
Yeah, I think if we go back to that other slide and just add some of the numerics around it, that might help.
Well, I think that's important, only because we need to... What's important is this is about equity, and so, that's a very difficult conversation to have. It's a very difficult conversation when you're talking about resources. And so, if we can illustrate that intentionally, and while we're discussing needs, we're discussing it, we're discussing a equity-based budget based on concentration of need, and so, that needs to be highlighted and, I think, drawn out. So, if you can use that file or that... So if you can use that, that file or that slide, that I think would be helpful. But underline, the underlying conversation here is equity.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that the slide, well, I think it's an important slide because it's, it's been a grounding slide and it is a slide that's a visual that we've used, you know, in all of our presentations and with our community. But it doesn't, you know, it doesn't get to what Ms. Brody is, is speaking to, right? It's the, the notion that a school might have a need that they have identified that might not be covered by 504, might not be covered by SPED, might not be covered by, you know, the, the instructional coaches that we, we give the schools, might not be covered by any of that, yet the school has deemed that it is a need that they have. And so the discretionary dollars could, could be used for that, but the discretionary dollars might have been earmarked for something else that's, that's not a need, but that's like a want.
Well, right, and that's my conversation.
But that's the challenge that we have, right? When we're trying to build an equity-based budget, right? What, what are those? That's the tension that we, that we have.
And I'm just saying, we should just be honest about the tension, that's all.
Could, could I just reference something on slide 14 with the stipends? Can you just speak to those only because they were... You see at the bottom stipends, pre-K 5, 134 per pupil?
Want me to talk?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we just wanted to...
Because that's a new, that's, that's content that was not introduced in a previous slide.
Yep, and it's, it's kind of the last three that we'll, we'll draw out some more illustrations for you. But we wanted to make sure we had dedicated per pupil funding for stipends. So this could be for subs, you know, a nurse sub, a teacher sub, a certified sub. It could be for leadership. So we wanted to, we differentiated here between elementary and high school just based on what we've seen historically, just based on our internal numbers. But this wasn't a last-minute one, but it was certainly one with working through the, the OTM group that we felt was important to, to draw out and not just bury within the discretionary dollars that a school would get.
Yeah. So just to share some thinking around the stipends, right? And having to be careful, this is probably more for, for my team, as we think about a school that might need funding for the substitutes, right? To pay for substitutes.
Absolutely.
Might also be a school that needs to have funding for stipends for teachers to assume leadership roles and/or stipends for teachers to assume extracurricular, you know, to, to be the advisor for the, the debate club or things like that. And so just for my team to kind of keep track of that because it can, it can go fast in a, in a school that's high needs and has a high need for substitute teachers.
Absolutely.
And not, and be left with no funding for, you know, teacher, teacher leadership stipends.
Got a question. When we were doing the DME and we had this city chart of all the CBOs all over again, and I just want to go back to CBOs, how are we leveraging the CBOs or any kind of partnership when it comes to discretionary funds and other things? Because again, I know all of our partners are dedicated to your priorities and everyone wants to buy into, you know, chronic absenteeism or ELL or just, you know, literacy. But how do we get the, those supports for, I call them the grandma squad, but like, you know, retired teachers and, and other community members who want to contribute and help in a modest way? How do we, how do we leverage that partnership? So that the district's doing everything on its own? So how do we, how do we expand the pot before we divide it?
In terms of the funding or in terms of a partnership?
Partnership resources and possibly funding, all three. Because you may have a partnership that says, we don't have funding, but we have an army of volunteers.
Sure.
Travelers and insurance companies have mentors. And so how do we leverage the mentors who might like sports after? And so they're, when a volunteer coached hockey or a volunteer coached volleyball, something to that effect. So how do we, how do we leverage that? Or is that a way to do that? And/or if we're talking about, for example, volunteers, how do we, how do we, do we have a program for volunteers and how we lever, how do we leverage that to supplement this?
So we do have, you know, dedicated staff at Central Office that works on the volunteer process. But it's also an opportunity for the schools, you know, to think about those discretionary dollars. I know that there are some agencies that, you know, get their own funding and then the service delivery has to happen at a school. Actually, some of the conditions for the grant funding is, you know, based on the delivery happening at a school for our students. And so I think is that there are different ways to get at that.
But in the past, it was more like the, the school had the autonomy to do it. So how do you sort of interject the district so that you're making sure that everything's aligned? I guess, because as a principal, I can get a partner, I can go and get your electric boat, for example. But if I went and got that partnership and I want to focus on, you know, basket weaving, but you want me to focus on academic support for athletes, how do we reconcile that?
So in terms of discretionary, they are discretionary, right? We are saying that this is an opportunity for a school to innovate. If they want to work on student leadership or, you know, have it earmarked towards, I don't know, field trips for like, that's not a good example, but we, we work with principals and encourage that, you know, the partnerships are strategic, but more important than that is around sustainability, right? We have to be very careful that we don't engage in a partnership that is gonna last a year and then, you know, that after that, the, the, the partner, the CBO can't secure additional funding and then the school, you know, designed a whole program around that service being available. So I, I think those are the conversations that we have to have with principals. While not saying, right, that we're constricting them because we do want our principals to be able to innovate and, and build partnerships as well based on specific needs that their schools may have.
Okay, so, so your chiefs, I get you, all right, thank you.
And this would be handled outside of the budget and through the Office of Outreach?
Right, in, in chief of schools, I guess.
But if there's a cost, right, we're, we're saying...
Yeah.
I mean, there are, there are times that we come, you know, we have, we come across grants, right? And so we make those opportunities available to our schools.
Okay, I get it. Not restricting, but you want to make sure it's structured, but not restricting?
No, discretionary, discretionary, they...
All right, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I touch on what I've been touching on probably all night once again? Because I'm, because if, if you've ever worked in a school, you know certain schools are good at tackling something that other schools aren't and it seems like it's not a need in the school.
Right.
But it is.
It is.
For instance, when my oldest daughter went to Breakthrough Magnet, they don't have, they don't need substitutes because the principal at the time had a partnership with, I don't know how many universities or if it was one, that she had graduate interns. So the graduate interns were so embedded in how everything run that they can take over the class, you don't need subs, so you don't need a sub-budget. So that, so those cer, it's certain things that they work it, but if that was not there, it would be a need. So when we're thinking about what we define as what schools need and don't, it's things that we don't know how schools worked the magic. Like, I've been at some of our neighborhood schools where they just had extreme issues with behavior, but you might not know that because the way the behavior techs worked with the nurse and the teacher and say, well, maybe the child did not take their meds today, but we're gonna, they're gonna, we're gonna have them with you for this period of time because, but you wouldn't know that. But if that system wasn't in place, you'll come into school and kids running all over the place. So the flexibility to have maybe one, one, two behavior texts in this particular school, like, your school get two behavior texts? Like, how, how did y'all work that out? But you saw how they managed that and it, and it was almost kind of magical, right? Because of the challenges they faced. So I'm hoping that when we look at funding, that those things are considered and I'm hoping that that's on the mind and that the schools are sharing that. This is how we managed and that with that gone, this is a game changer for, for our school community. So I just wanted to give an example.
Now, in our earlier presentations on the model, we talked about the ability for principals to swap out resources based on the particular needs of the school, as Ms. Brody was saying. We, we haven't talked about that at all. Has that been set aside or...
No, no, they, yeah, they still have that ability. You know, assuming, you know, let's use, I don't know, a social worker as an example. Maybe a school has allocated four based on their size and they might say, I think we can, we can achieve everything we need, abide by all the IAP rules and I only need three to do that. So they can swap that, that resource for something different. Yes, so there's not only discretionary dollars, stipend dollars, supply dollars, and then they also have the flexibility to swap certain positions.
And that's gonna be explicitly detailed in the, the book?
It is, it's already detailed for them, yeah. So they knows which, so they can't swap an executive assistant because we felt like that was mandatory in every school. But they can swap, you know, an extra social worker as an example. They might swap an AP for a dean if they have a dean and they don't feel like they need an AP. And if they had additional funding there, the difference between salary, they could use that different salary money for something different.
Does that address your concern, Ms. Brody?
No, partly. I'm just saying for those, for those schools who worked that out, but now they're working with less, so they can't pull it off. That was my concern.
Yep, yep.
With that addition, with funding disappearing, you don't have that, providing that the flex dollars and all of that. You know, I understand how that plays in. But if you had the funds to work that out and then funds are removed, you can't necessarily have that same, that same makeup because you're working with less.
And so, and that school, in that example, might need all that they currently have that could be swappable, right? So it wouldn't be, like, they couldn't give that up. Is, correct?
Like, they would say if we, it, it seems like we're working...
That's what she's saying.
It seems like we have more than we need, but that's only because these things we would've need, would've had to spend on, we're compensating it because we work in this thing out over here. But without that funding, now we have to reconfigure and figure out what do we have and how are we gonna stretch this to meet the need of the school? Because those needs don't necessarily fall under certain categories that we're using.
So is it sort of like Naylor with their partnership with, with Central? And so they, they leveraged the student teachers and they leveraged some other things? And so that way, the, the, the principal would use his budget to do it? I mean, actually, that, that principal actually had command of that budget, but he used the resources to do other things. And so if we're gonna take those resources away, then even if you are leveraging all of the partnerships and the student teachers, you still have the void because you took the, the funds away. So even though they, they plugged a hole over here, we just created a hole over here, is what you're kind of...
Yeah, think up, think about, think about, let's go back to Capital Prep, right? I'm, I'm impressed when I'm in the building, they have a lot of male, black males in that school that I don't see in other schools. I don't know what their job function is, but I know they're swooping in and handling problems, right? They might be paras, I didn't know, I was only there a couple times. So it, it could be that that presence amongst those children make a difference that you want to come to school. That it could be something there that's not measured.
Okay, I get you.
So if you don't have the budget and you have to let go, we know paras, if they're not 101s, they, they're some of the ones the first to go. That can impact chronic absenteeism. We don't see it because we don't see the mentoring ship. We don't see certain things and we assume. So that sort of thing is started to come to mind that why don't you have chronic absenteeism? Is it because you have the presence of minority males and they, and they have these relationships as other schools may not? So things that we cannot measure, but it's paid for. And now we can't pay for it and what will come, what will come to the surface when certain funding is removed? That's my concern. That the things that we thought were not an issue were really an issue because it wasn't, it wasn't showing. So those are some concerns that I have.
I have a question. So earlier, Dave, you talked about how your team has been working with the school since, at one point we talked about October, and they're working closely with your staff on a collaborative basis. So using the example Ms. Brody gave, shouldn't that be happening in this two-way communication with your staff? Because I know we, they, we did it in aggregate, which means if you're, let's say, an outlier from some of the earlier slides, so maybe your thing didn't lift up to the top.
Yep.
But should we expect that those principals, staff, et cetera, who are involved are having those ongoing conversations and part of what your team is doing is working through those issues?
Yeah, so it's, we actually just had this discussion yesterday. So I think there's, there's two places where hopefully that flushes, I call it sort of the intangibles within the school, you know? One is when we all get to sit down around these cross-collaborative budget meetings. But I think it's also happening now, and I just talked to the budget team yesterday, just asking for some feedback, first week and a half out. We had one that, you know, we have a budget rep that was fairly creative and said, look, I have a couple schools and I know what the model's telling me, but we're gonna come back with two scenarios. One is according to the model and then we're gonna give you one that's a little different than the model because it just didn't necessarily fit the needs of the school. So I think we're starting to hear that a little bit. But just, you know, remember, we just haven't had a chance to sit down with the principals yet because everyone's working through this, but I'm, I'm hoping that's where it starts to surface. But it sounds like we have a couple right now that are already moving down that path.
So is it fair to say by the time we're seeing information as board members, these conversations should have been had?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I know, I'm not saying everybody agrees, right? But I'm just saying the conversation should have been had, that people had an opportunity to raise them, whether it be the principal, the SGCs, et cetera, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Well, that's what I was getting at.
Probably a couple times.
Between chief of schools and engagement, we should flush that information out.
Well, and there's also, you know, a responsibility at the school level as well, right? For these conversations to happen between the administrative team and SGCs as well. And, and vice versa with us here, you know, at Central Office. But, but you're just kind of grounding us on the reality, right? That even with all of this, right, that, that we're still facing a deficit? And so that's the next level of work for, for us to kind of work through as a, as a collective body.
Well, now I have a question about that. So the deficit that we've been talking about and projecting, are those already embedded in these numbers or no? So in other words, when the, I forget what was it?
The 12 million?
Yeah, okay, the $12 million. So in other words, when we've been going through this and, you know, somebody has $134 for a stipend and stuff, I'm saying, have we already worked it through? So it's really not 134, it should've been $34 for... You get what I'm saying? Like, you've already worked the model through with the deficit built in and accounted for, or no? Like, you've already worked the model through with the deficit built in and accounted for, or no? So in other words, when you run the model, are we still 12 million dollars in deficit?
Yeah, we're still short.
So really, so just again, going back to these stipends, and I, and I'll be honest, in this case, I'm so used to stipends being for, like, young people and parents. And so I'm having a hard time understanding what stipends mean for the teachers. But, but, you know, when I see the stipends, like, at, at high schools for the 334, again, acknowledging I'm not sure exactly what the stipends can be used for, that really should've been 50 bucks. Do you, you know what I'm saying? Like, like, I just, I, so...
The real cost.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm saying, yeah, the real dollars are worked into that. And so your answer to my question, I think.
So, so two, it's a two-part answer. Yes, it is, is built in, right, the deficit that we have. But then the stipend, I'll just give you a tangible example. You know, we wanna have at our high schools, uh, clubs after school, right? And we want adults in the building to run the clubs. And so they would need a stipend to do that work.
So, for example, something like a citywide spelling bee? So you have to have the small clubs in the school to prepare for the citywide spelling bee that we should have next year?
Or poetry club, or...
Good example.
Leadership development club.
Yeah, exactly, fine.
Yeah, FBLA, I mean, all of those things that we just...
Say that on the record.
A finance club, a balancing a checkbook club, money doesn't grow on trees, to kids' club.
That is the club that we should start now.
But money management, definitely.
That's awesome.
So just, right, remember that the, all of these are in alignment with, you know, one of the first slides that we, we talked about in terms of what we wanted to make sure we had, right, around the enrichment opportunities for students. Maybe they, I don't know that we can make an even more explicit connection, but it's all built in. I don't know, however, if, if there was a better way to, to visualize it. But that's an example of how we would show up, right, through the stipends in terms of the middle school. You know, we talked about slide five, additional funding for enrichment in middle school and high school. Any other, you know, as we think about that last slide, you know, just opportunities and even additional thoughts? The, the feedback, the conversation has been very helpful for us in terms of even further clarity that we might be able to offer when we present, you know, this, some of this new information in the community.
I would just suggest in our next meeting, when we're going over this process, or to Ms. Oliver's point, then just start off in the beginning, just stating that you have talked with principals or administration about this. They've expressed their concerns and all of that. Because we cannot be up here talking and fighting for schools and they've already said we're okay. So, you know, we can have a heated debate about HMTCA and they've already said they're perfectly fine. So just ensuring that, because we, we're fighting for what we believe is right. However, we might not necessarily know because we're not directly speaking with principals or any other administrator. So just kind of giving us that caveat, that stating that principals or administrators or whomever have expressed their concerns and that they have, probably not fully agreed, but they have a clear understanding of what's going on and how this would affect their school and that their concerns have been understood and listened to. And then obviously, if they feel that they need to come, they'll come to our board meeting and talk at that time. But just so that we're not up here debating over something that they might have already known about.
We will continue to encourage our principals to, you know, communicate with the EDs. I see you looking at me, if you wanna, feel free to come up, Ms. Abila. But I think, you know, it's important, what you, what you referenced, Ms. Clark, around understanding the funding, right? And, and the decisions and the allocations. Whether or not there's agreement, that's something very different, right? And so we have to make sure that we differentiate those two.
Good evening, everyone. Just so you know, the executive directors have had several meetings with the principals and will continue to meet with them. The first round of meetings was just to become familiar with the actual template and learn the template, and then moving forward to actually begin to form their budgets using the template. And as questions come up in regard to how will my schedule look, for example, with this new budget? They're working with the principals to really identify the changes that may be, that might need, need to be made in order to make some adjustments. So we gather their concerns and we are taking them one at a time to make sure that we address their concerns and come to a common understanding of, of where we're gonna land. So we haven't completed that yet, but we're in the process of doing that. And then we'll have another conversation, again, after we have, I think David talked about the cross department conversations. So after we have that, they will also, we'll have another conversation around that as well. So we've done a lot of talking around the budget and, and really kept them included in the process and really put their feedback into action. And so I think there will be no misunderstandings. And again, they might be, they'll clearly understand where we land, not necessarily agree, but will understand where they went.
Earlier, a question was asked us to the SGCs. And so given that it's still an ongoing process, I'm just wondering as to, you know, how does the SGC come in and out of this process? Say a principal has a wondering about, you know, a program that, or an initiative that they're not able to, to fund now. What's the, and, and I know it's up to the school-based leader to communicate with the SGC, but I'm just wondering of the, of the cycle.
So that came up today at our administrative institute. And we had conversations today around the budget as well in their small groups. And so there were three SGC meetings actually tonight in different schools. And so the principals are communicating where they are now, right? So where they're on the process now, as we, so that it's not completed yet. But, you know, where it stands now, some questions they may have. Some are, don't have questions and their, 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 their budget is balanced and is sort of quote unquote done. But they are going, they tell them where they are in the process. When we get to the point of final, whenever we feel final, then they will recommunicate again at different points to clarify any questions that were left open as of today, to go back or say, okay, we're at a point where we are pretty much done. So each SGC is gonna be a little different because principals are in different places.
Well, then the impact, right, is also different. Even if they fall within the, the K-12, the, the middle school, the K-5, the impact is different based on the context.
Exactly.
A, a question on this impact thing. I, and our revenue is not changing. And we want to provide additional resources to the places that've been under resourced. So we can't get away from, taking away from some other groups. So those schools that see their budgets being reduced, do you see them as being understanding of the process and feeling that it's being fair to them? Or how, how do you see that reaction happening?
So I think what's helping with the reaction is, so they're used to having X amount of, X amount of resources, X amount of dollars. And not necessarily looking outside the box and thinking about, how can it change if I have a different amount, right? And so I think that we're at the point right now, hoping that, see that in a little different light. That if you had, you know, X amount of dollars and now you have different, how could we reorganize something that's happening? For example, is it around the schedule? Is it around different, different resources on what a person does, right? So maybe it's not a resource teacher, maybe I need something else in my building to really address a need differently. So we're in the process and there's some, there are some principles that, you know, we're not there yet of landing where they're, okay, yes, I'm great and happy about that. But, but we're still working through that now. We're not leaving them alone. We're working through, the execs are working really hard to, to work collaboratively with them to, to think out of the box.
Yes, I, I think what Ms. Brody's expressing is that some schools are already doing extraordinary things that we haven't been aware of. And how are they going to continue with fewer resources?
I am happy about this, other schools that are getting more money, by the way. That, that's, that, that is absolutely wonderful because it's long overdue. So I don't wanna not say that. But certain schools just hide certain things that outsiders will not necessarily know. And I hope they're speaking up and thinking through how that will continue and that it will not, what they're losing will not impact their effectiveness in that area.
So when you, when you spoke, the first thing that came to my mind is that, that some principals have different ways of thinking out of the box and being strategic about using their resources. And so having them share those out-of-the-box thinking and sharing those type of strategies will help other schools maybe do something similar. So the impact wouldn't be as, as, as great. And so I think that was part of the conversation today in, in the afternoon with the principals in their groups about, so what are you doing? How are you working this so that they can collaboratively work together to come with that strategic thinking that you're talking about?
And I do wanna say on the record that as many people as I know that work in schools, it's sad to report that principals are not telling you guys what the real struggles are in their schools. They're hiding it because they don't want you to know that that school is that much of an issue. Because things I hear, like, in, in their, in, in, because they don't wanna be like, oh, this school, they wanna pretend like they're doing better than they are. And that is, I don't know how we'll ever get over that. Because as a principal, you do wanna be like, I have control over my building. I, my staff is doing great and we're making strides as far as our kids. We see the test scores, so we can see the academic progress. But we don't see a lot of other things that are not being brought to the light. But the staff in those buildings do know what's going on. And, and we, and it's scary, some of the things that go on in the school and, because it's just not being reported, because they don't wanna look at as being ineffective. So maybe if, I don't know, if, if they're not comfortable to expose the things that are going, but I'm hoping that we're creating an environment even for, and I'm not blaming the principals. If the, if this, if the environment is comfortable enough for them to share what is wrong so they can get the help that they need. Because acting like you don't have a problem is just gonna get worse. So I'm hoping that we're creating the, the culture that, that can live in instead of hiding what's wrong at your school because it is being done and it was done when I've worked in schools. So I'm just hoping that the freedom to expose the issues so we can get you the resource that you need. If we don't know you are struggling in that area, we can't provide the support. So I don't know if that's gonna take us talking to staff outside of administration. I don't know how that looks, but it's things going on in schools that I don't think is being exposed to above the school. So that's, that's a hope for, that I have for the environment that the kids are in day-to-day. And I know that we can't solve that, you know, right away. But if the, if the environment is there that they can share and not be looked upon in a certain way, it'll help, it'll help us all, it'll help the kids at the school level and it'll help our district overall.
One thing that I just wanted to also respond to is, so we, I and my team, we are very cognizant of the fact that we are a magnet operator, right? We know what it is to be a magnet school. We know, you know, I've, I've led one, I've, and now I support, right? And lead on behalf of them as well. And so, and so we know that magnet schools have to market themselves. We know that some of our magnet schools have, you know, their very specific theme and strength that, that pull our families in. And so, you know, that's, that's an example of the tension, right? That we are feeling when we're, when we're talking about an equity-based approach to the resources, the people, the time and the money, right? And so I, I'm, I wanna just call that out. And the fact that we still have, right, schools that have been underfunded when we look at it from, from the need perspective. And so I don't have an, so this is an opportunity, right, to try to get at both. But there is a significant tension, knowing that our magnet, you know, costs continue to increase, right? We, we just got, you know, it continues to increase, right? Some of our, you know, we get billed for the students. Our students that go, you know, to other operators and their tuition increased yet again. And so it's real. So I just, it's, I just wanted to capture that. I don't, I know our schools do a great job in trying to maintain their identity and what it is that makes them have a solid, strong draw. And it could potentially be compromised when we're talking about this, this model.
I have a question. Because I wanna continue having our meeting this evening, our workshop. So we talked about these teacher stipends that we've learned more about. I actually now realize I know teachers and had teachers in the past when they used to talk about this. I didn't realize they were, they're called stipends. My question is this, we're talking about sustainability, the, you know, similar to when we talk about the teachers and magic in the classroom, what the principals can do. Do you have something similar or considering as putting in the budget for the central office? Like stipends for people who are these stars that can share this information and other type of incentives? Because I think one of the things I, I would hope would happen at one point, I, I agree, obviously, people were like, my school looks awesome. I'm not gonna tell you my secret sauce. But it would be great if there was some type of incentive for us to be able to lift ourselves up as a district, to have that information shared. And if, and I'm just thinking about, is this the time, as we're looking at budget, to be very cognizant of that, so?
Can you give me an example?
Well, I'm just, okay, so I'm back at the statements. So I'm sitting here thinking about, when it comes to deficits, we start going, what's going on in central office, cut, cut, cut. And I just wanna be really clear about, are we cutting into these type of opportunities to give some of our leaders and stars throughout the district the ability basically to, you know, all bolts rise kind of concept? And I just wanna be really clear about that as we are kind of putting our pressure and looking, and doing our due diligence as it relates to the budget. Because is it these type of things that we're missing out on? Because, you know, I mean, there's a reality that we all have to face here in terms of the budget. But I'm just thinking in my head, if this was something where, okay, yeah, how do I incentivize those amazing teachers and to be this pure leader, et cetera? Are those the things that are being cut out of the central office budget?
So, yes, unfortunately. And so what that gets to us, right? So that's a retention strategy, when you think about it. And so I can't say, right, that we have, we have that. And I know that other places do.
Okay, so I'm just gonna review, Ms. Brody needs a one-on-one update, you said, correct? Or you wanted some kind of a brief between the meetings before we go to the next meeting and retreat? You wanted to have a one-on-one sit-down about your concerns or?
It, it seems like this stuff should be forthcoming. I'm thinking, like, the budget and when we go through that process, I'm thinking it will reveal itself, right?
Yep, I, I just, I just wanted to acknowledge that I heard you say it. All right, good, okay. So that's good. So we're gonna clear that out and we're gonna get that information. We do have a budget retreat coming up, so we'll have another conversation about this in depth with more information. And so I just want to thank you for the hard work on this. Again, we're gonna focus on equity and we're gonna have a conversation. This is gonna be a hard conversation and a real conversation across, across the district. And I realize it's gonna be emotional. So thank you for being steadfast and preparing for the storm that, to come. And the last thing I'll say is, this is, this is an opportunity to build community. And like my colleague said, this is not, or, or the superintendent, this is not magnet versus neighborhood or one school versus the other. They're all our... They're all our schools, these are all our children, and we have to focus on what's good for children and what's good for students. And so, I don't think we have the luxury of doing the magnet school or the neighborhood school or we're Robin Peter to pay Paul, even though we're kind of doing that. But it's necessary. And so, we have to focus on the things that, to everyone's point, the neighborhood schools that have traditionally been underfunded for generations. How do we resolve that? I think there are a larger conversation that we should have. Again, we may have to be confronted with more school closures and consolidations. We may have to have a more, more robust conversation about how we exist and coexist with CREC. And so, those are future conversations. I don't want to tee them up. I'm simply just throwing them out there to say that this is a difficult conversation all around and we need to work together. We need our instructional leaders to understand that you're doing everything you can. We're doing everything we can to provide resources and quality resources to schools, but we're not trying to handicap any one particular school. So, I just want to say that. And again, thank you for all your hard work. And if no one else has anything to say, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and we guys will see you, what, two weeks? Meeting adjourned.